All right. Good evening, everybody. Big crowd tonight. Welcome to the December 8th Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Bayvis, do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Okay. The next item is written communication. Dr. Bayvis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
All right. Check those off. Okay, the next item, items for information. And the first item is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2024.
Yes, so we have two awards for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report that both Rudy Mayo and Kendra Williams would like to share with the board.
Nice.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, as mentioned by Dr. Campbell, we have two awards that we're going to be presenting and discussing tonight. One from GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, and then the other from ASBO, Association of School Business Officials International. And so, for both of these awards, our highlighting our excellence in reporting for our annual comprehensive financial report related to the audit that was done for fiscal year 2024, for which Rudy takes the lead. It is indeed a team effort and a huge lift, but he spearheaded for fiscal year 2024, and we were able to obtain these two awards as a result of that. And so, we don't take it lightly, even though some of them we've received 16 years over. We don't take it for -- little plug. We don't, we don't take it lightly at all. We don't take it for granted, but we just try our very best to maintain high standards. So, thank you to Rudy and the business office team and everyone else in the district that contributes to that effort. I'll just read a few of the words that came from GFOA regarding the award and also from ASBO that just highlights that we met the stand, the high standards of the program, which include demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financials, our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. And then, some words from ASBO related to their award. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects your commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. So, once again, a huge thank you to Rudy, to the team, to the board for its oversight. Don't take it lightly for GFOA, 23 school districts in Illinois. We have over 800 school districts in Illinois. 23 of them were awarded this award for fiscal year 24. And when it comes to the ASBO International Award, that's 63 school districts out of over 800. So, happy to be in that.
Yeah.
And Rudy, these awards that you can carry back. All right, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, where will these awards be kept?
Actually, if anybody wants to visit us in the business office, when you come in, we have a wall full of them.
Oh, see? That's awesome.
Come see us.
Yeah, and they're also listed in the front of our budget, correct?
Yes, also listed in the front of our budget, which is posted online.
Hey, I want to see it.
I'll start doing tours, Pat. Don't tempt me.
Yeah. I do. Thank you so much. Yeah. All right. Okay, super. Nice way to start the meeting. Yep. Okay, the next item is structural changes report.
Yes. So, a few years ago, ETHHS engaged a number of changes to the school day to adjust for students returning to ETHHS from the pandemic. And we went to a block schedule. We extended the passing period from five to 10 minutes, and I'm still hearing from ETHHS alum how problematic that is. But nonetheless, we wanted to slow the day down and give students an opportunity to sort of catch their breath in between classes and have more time with teachers instead of having a hectic nine-day, nine-period schedule. So, what you have before you tonight is the report that provided an assessment of those changes over the last several years. And this is sort of maybe in tandem from the, from the, from the data that the board received last month. And I thought that it would be a good idea to bring this data to you because it really pretty much highlights some of the, the results of some of the changes that we've made in the district and in the school over time. So, if I'm not leaving anything out, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Levy and Dr. Bayvis to walk the board through the structural changes report.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, turn it on. All right, hi. Okay, so, I'm going to give you like a little bit of context because it's been a long time since we talked about it. I think when we first introduced that we were going to do an evaluation several years ago. So, a little bit of context and then some like high-level findings from it, and then I can take any questions and just kind of like a little bit of our process throughout. So, like Dr. Campbell said, when we came back from, when we returned to in-person instruction and Dr. Campbell came out and said we were like looking to rehumanize educational experience, create a more supportive environment, increase students' staff well-being, and create equity-driven systemic change. And so, some of those changes that he just talked about, the block schedule, the longer passing periods were implemented and tasked my department with kind of an evaluation over time. So, we created a three-year evaluation plan. And so, what I'm going to talk about is this report is like kind of what we, the data we collected over the three years and then kind of trying to capture, you know, every year, Dr. Campbell and administration team collects data, looks at data, reviews data, makes adjustments based on that data throughout the year. So, this is kind of a big, high-level attempt to capture like some of the big changes throughout as it's a work in progress. And so, this report was through the school year 2024, but last year, as we were writing it and analyzing the data, we were also doing last year's data. So, there are places where we were able to incorporate the school year 25 data, like the classroom observations. And then, there's some places in here where like the surveys that once we finished this report, we looked at the surveys. And so, I've kind of added into my presentation here some of it I shared with you last month with the year in review, so that it shouldn't be too new. Okay. So, what we did, our data collection, we had staff surveys, we did student surveys, we'll be on well-being and belonging and feedback around the structural changes from staff and students. We have a student emotion, regulation, and coping skills study with activities and surveys we've been doing with Dr. Chris Rozek from Washington University for several years now. Our classroom observations and then reviewing attendance and discipline data. So, the way we organized the report, we thought about it in three, as we call domains. And everyone is, starts with SEL because the whole intent was to look at the experience, the social-emotional experience, the well-being. And so, every domain is like SEL is the focus. So, we looked at well-being, support, and within that, that's looking at attitudes about self, others, and tasks, sense of belonging and connection, in-school-related stress and participation in school activities were some of the things we were looking at. In behavioral, we're looking at attendance, tardies, discipline referrals, discipline referrals, social probation and suspensions. And then, under the academic, we were looking at the classroom experience and classroom engagement and not so much the academic change in academics, but these are the things we were focusing on because this was when the big thing about coming back was looking about the experience and kind of rehumanizing that environment. And so, this we felt got to that. So, some high level from each domain. So, the first one under student mental health and well-being, here's where I'm adding some of the data from last year. So, last year, we saw, and we talked about this last month, 71% of students reported feeling a sense of belonging, and those rates are higher across all student groups. And this is higher compared to school year 24, which was 63%, and school year 2022, which is like the first year we started to collect this data for this report. And then, last year in our surveys, 80% of students reported that their teachers treat them with respect, and 71% feel their teachers care about them as a person. Again, these are two measures that are higher than the year before and the previous years. And then, throughout this time, and from the beginning, when we first started, when we were in lockdown, actually, we started collecting some data on depression markers. We have it through our surveys we ask, and then we also trying that with triangulate that with Dr. Rozek's surveys. And it all like has been lining up every year. So, what we're seeing is last year, the rate of students who identified like with the major depression markers was around 19%, which is a drop from 50% in May 2020. And so, research shows there's a correlation between students who feel their teachers care about them and their lives outside of school and lower depression levels and also they're highly motivated. And then, for context, research is like pre-pandemic, kind of an average depression of students in schools was around 11, 12%. So, to get back down to that is a really big thing to keep track of and to see this is like some really positive change that we're assuming, seeing over this, over these years. So, domain two, we, some highlights from that where we looked at attendance and discipline. So, we look at chronic absenteeism, and while it decreased a little bit and to 21% in 2024 from the year from a couple of years before, we did see that it went up last year. And so, it's still a concern. We're still keeping an eye on attendance, absenteeism, truancy. We saw that truancy was up in '22, had dipped the other year in school year '24 to 9%, and then last year in the school year '25 was like up again. So, we were talking about this last month of year review, the attendance, and keeping an eye on how that kind of has, like ticked up. We saw discipline referrals increase between school year 2022 and '24. And then, some of the highlights that I had in the implement over time, over these years, ETHHS has implemented attendance supports, restorative practices, and in '24, they implemented the bell-to-bell no-cell phone policy to kind of address some of these different data points. And so, then the last domain is around the classroom experience, and I have two different types of data that we collect. And, and it's myself and Dr. Liz Harder, Senior Research Associate, we're the ones that go in and do a lot of the classroom observations. And so, the observations in the survey data, they, they kind of, the themes, the constructs overlap, they triangulate, and so, what we see in one should and does kind of align with what we see in some others. So, the surveys looked at some constructs, and one of them is classroom community, and classroom community questions out of that are students, 70% saying they feel comfortable sharing their thoughts and opinions in class, which was up from the school year '24. And so, these survey results are also from last year in school year '25.
All right, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So where will these awards be kept?
Actually, if anybody wants to visit us in the business office, when you come in, we have a wall full of them.
Oh, see, that's awesome.
Come see us.
Yeah, and they're also listed in the front of our budget, correct?
Yes, also listed in the front of our budget, which is posted online.
Hey, I wanna see it.
I'll start doing tours, Pat, don't tempt me.
I do. Thank you so much. Yeah. All right. Okay, super. Nice way to start the meeting. Okay, the next item is structural changes report.
Yes. So a few years ago, E T H S engaged a number of changes to the school day to adjust for students returning to E T H S from the pandemic. And we went to a block schedule. We extended the passing period from five to 10 minutes. And I'm still hearing from E T H S alum how problematic that is. But nonetheless, we wanted to slow the day down and give students an opportunity to sort of catch their breath in between classes and have more time with teachers instead of having a hectic nine-day, nine-period schedule. So what you have before you tonight is the report that provided an assessment of those changes over the last several years. And this is sort of maybe in tandem from the data that the board received last month. And I thought that it would be a good idea to bring this data to you because it really pretty much highlights some of the results of some of the changes that we've made in the district and in the school over time. So if I'm not leaving anything out, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Levy and Dr. Beavis to walk the board through the structural changes report.
Thank you, good evening. Okay, turn it on, all right, hi. Okay, so I'm gonna give you like a little bit of context because it's been a long time since we talked about it. I think when we first introduced it, we were going to do an evaluation several years ago. So a little bit of context and then some like high-level findings from it. And then I can take any questions and just kind of like a little bit of our process throughout. So like Dr. Campbell said, when we came back from, when we returned to in-person instruction and Dr. Campbell came out and said, we're like looking to rehumanize the educational experience, create a more supportive environment, increase students' staff well-being, and create equity-driven systemic change. And so some of those changes that he just talked about, the block schedule, the longer passing periods were implemented and tasked my department with kind of an evaluation over time. So we created a three-year evaluation plan. And so what I'm going to talk about is this report is like kind of what we, the data we collected over the three years. And then kind of trying to capture, you know, every year, Dr. Campbell and administration team collects data, looks at data reviews, data, makes adjustments based on that data throughout the year. So this is kind of a big, high-level attempt to capture like some of the big changes throughout as it's a work in progress. And so this report was through the school year 2024. But last year, as we were writing it and analyzing the data, we were also doing last year's data. So there are places where we were able to incorporate the school year 25 data, like the classroom observations. And then there's some places in here where like the surveys, that once we finished this report, we looked at the surveys. And so I've kind of added into my presentation here some of it I shared with you last month with the year in review, so it shouldn't be too new. Okay. So what we did, our data collection, we had staff surveys, we did student surveys, we'll be on well-being and belonging and feedback around the structural changes from staff and students. We have a student emotion, regulation, and coping skills study with activities and surveys we've been doing with Dr. Chris Rozek from Washington University for several years now. Our classroom observations and then reviewing attendance and discipline data. So the way we organized the report, we thought about it in three, as we call domains. And everyone starts with S E L because the whole intent was to look at the experience, the social-emotional experience, the well-being. And so every domain is like, S E L is the focus. So we looked at well-being, support, and within that, that's looking at attitudes about self, others, and tasks, sense of belonging and connection, in-school-related stress, and participation in school activities are some of the things we were looking at. In behavioral, we're looking at attendance, tardies, discipline referrals, discipline referrals, social probations and suspensions. And then under the academic, we were looking at the classroom experience and classroom engagement. And not so much the academic change in academics, but these are the things we were focusing on because this was when the big thing about coming back was looking about the experience and kind of rehumanizing that environment. And so this, we felt, got to that. So some high level from each domain. So the first one under student mental health and well-being, here's where I'm adding some of the data from last year. So last year, we saw, and we talked about this last month, 71% of students reported feeling a sense of belonging. And those rates are higher across all student groups. And this is higher compared to school year 24, which was 63%, and school year 2022, which is like the first year we started to collect this data for this report. And then last year, in our surveys, 80% of students reported that their teachers treat them with respect and 71% feel their teachers care about them as a person. Again, these are two measures that are higher than the year before and the previous years. And then throughout this time, and from the beginning, when we first started, when we were in lockdown, actually, we started collecting some data on depression markers. We have it through our surveys we asked. And then we also triangulate that with Dr. Rozek's surveys. And it all like has been lining up every year. So what we're seeing is last year, the rate of students who identified like with the major depression markers was around 19%, which is a drop from 50% in May 2020. And so research shows there's a correlation between students who feel their teachers care about them and their lives outside of school and lower depression levels, and also they're highly motivated. And then for context, research shows like pre-pandemic, kind of an average depression of students in schools was around 11, 12%. So to get back down to that is a really big thing to keep track of and to see this is like some really positive change that we're seeing over this, over these years. So domain two, we, some highlights from that where we looked at attendance and discipline. So we look at chronic absenteeism. And while it decreased a little bit and to 21% in 2024 from the year, from a couple of years before, we did see that it went up last year. And so it's still a concern, we're still keeping an eye on attendance, absenteeism, truancy. We saw that truancy was up in '22, had dipped the other year in school year '24 to 9%. And then last year, in the school year '25, was like up again. So we were talking about this last month, the year review, the attendance, and keeping an eye on how that kind of has tacked up. We saw discipline referrals increase between school year 2022 and '24. And then some of the highlights that I had in there, implement over time, over these years, E T H S has implemented attendance supports, restorative practices. And in '24, they implemented the bell-to-bell no-cell phone policy to kind of address some of these different data points. And so then the last domain is around the classroom experience. And I have two different types of data that we collect. And it's myself and Dr. Liz Harder, Senior Research Associate, we're the ones that go in and do a lot of the classroom observations. And so the observations in the survey data, they kind of, the themes, the constructs overlap, they triangulate. And so what we see in one should and does kind of align with what we see in some others. So the surveys looked at some constructs, and one of them is classroom community. And classroom community questions out of that are students, 70% saying they feel comfortable sharing their thoughts and opinions in class, which was up from the school year '24. And so these survey results are also from last year and school year '25. Student voice, where students feel that their ideas are being taken seriously, that was up 70% last year compared to prior years. Supportive teaching, 73% of students say their teachers regularly check in to make sure they understand the class material. Again, all of these measures are up last year compared to prior years, which is a positive trend up. Another construct that we look at in our surveys is a well-organized class. And it's questions from this, 75% of students agree it's clear that what they are supposed to be doing in class, they know what they're supposed to be doing in class. And then meaningful work, where two-thirds, 69%, they feel what they learn in class is connected to real life. So that's up from 56% in 2024. This will see kind of overlap with our observation constructs. And then the last one is teacher caring, which also you see in the surveys, data points. So 68% feel their teachers care about their life outside of school, and that's up from 59% in 2024. Now, in addition to the surveys, we also have classroom observations. And we started conducting these, we have them from the last two years. And so the way we conduct our observations, these are not teacher evaluations, the way these are done is we randomly select classes, teachers in classes across all the departments. We look at a random selection across all the different times of day, the different blocks, and then we split them across across the different days of the week. And so we take this, the tool we've used, which we've used for several years before, is a class tool, and it's on a scale of one to seven, where one and two is low, three, four, and five is mid, and six and seven is high. We score it across these different constructs that I'll point out, and then we aggregate it across all of the observation. So our goal is to see as many as we can and then aggregate it to get sort of a big-picture view of how students are experiencing their classes across the school throughout the day, throughout the year. And our observations, we start them in November, and we do them through about March, like maybe a week before spring break. And so that's our window that we've been doing them in. And so the constructs we look at, we look at positive climate, and that's looking at the emotional connection, whether or not there's respect and enjoyment demonstrated between teachers and students. Regard for adolescent perspectives means the extent that teachers, they meet their adolescents' needs for autonomy and active role in class and meaningful interactions with themselves and with their peers. There's analysis and inquiry, which is a degree which students engage in higher-order thinking skills. This includes metacognition in this domain. Instructional dialogue, it's a purposeful use of content-focused cumulative discussion between teachers and students, sorry, teachers and students. And the key term here is cumulative, it's not just a discussion, but it's an ongoing back-and-forth to deepen understanding and knowledge. And then the last one is student engagement, and we're looking at overall active engagement, not just a passive engagement. And so just a high-level chart we have over the two years, '24, and then last year in school year '25, we see that E T H S is stronger in the areas of positive climate and student engagement. And when we look at these numbers, kind of how I said, one and two is on the low end, and six and seven are on the high, anything that's kind of like on a five, so five is like mid-high, five and higher is really strong. And so we see areas of opportunity in analysis and inquiry and instructional dialogue. In the report, when we looked at this a little deeper, we found there were differences in classes. And this is through exploratory analysis of the data. In classes that had 45% or more students, Black and Latino students, and classes with less than 45% had some significant, statistically-significant differences in instructional dialogue and analysis and inquiry. And one more thing to point on this chart here, the little asterix under the 2024-25 school year for instructional dialogue, I D, and the A I analysis and inquiry, that means there is a statistically-significant difference from the year before. So that increase from 3.7 to 4.2 and from 3.0 to 3.8 is a significant increase. It's not just the way like 4.3 to 4.5, that wasn't significant. That's an increase, but it wasn't like as big a statistically-significant increase as these other two are. So it's kind of like the big-picture, kind of high level from the report. So that report was done, those three years are done, but we're not done. So we're continuing to collect the data that we have identified is really relevant and important to keep looking at over patterns and trends over time, which are the classroom observations and the student survey data. And we have like a rich, and we're getting a nice trend of survey data, so we're going to continue with that to see if there's any more change over time, knowing that every year, as you look at data, Dr. Campbell and your team, and you make adjustments as needed to see how this is like supporting and changing and improving things over time. I think that's all my highlights.
I have a couple things.
Okay.
Of all the reports that we bring to the board, this report is the one that we spend the greatest amount of time on. We did a leadership retreat, which we unpacked this information. We did a two-day department chair retreat where we looked specifically at instructional dialogue and analysis and inquiry. We also, as a professional development team, we have an ecology of professional learning team. And we took this data and we integrated it into our professional learning this year, which is all around, we have an instructional framework, and we're using the collaborative action research for equity model. And we've transformed all of our professional learning opportunities, whether they're action groups around on Mondays that are department-specific. We also have cross-departmental opportunities. But everything is grounded really in increasing instructional dialogue and analysis and inquiry. And right now, we're looking specifically at chunking and processing information in a classroom and the frequency at which we do that and providing discreet instructional strategies and an opportunity for teachers to reflect on that up against a focal student whom they've selected. So we're getting it out of the teacher planning mode and more into like, how is this received by kids? And then how is this received by focal students and using that to inform practice this year and ongoing? That's just an example of how, and also, this was part of the opening institute day report as well. Dr. McNeil and I pulled data from this when we spoke to the faculty. I think we're open for questions.
Okay, questions, board? I remember some of the earlier iterations of this when we were trying to figure out how to ask the questions so that the students really understood what we mean by, do they feel like they belong, do they feel like the teachers care? And we, I think we've really worked hard. And this really indicates to me that we've done a really good job of communicating that in a way that we can pull this and look at this data and make it meaningful and use this data to make changes in what we do with students.
Yeah, we have a train of the way we ask questions around sense of belonging and connection, feeling confident. A couple of years ago, Dr. Campbell asked, how can we get to a culture of care? So now, for the last two years, we have a different, open-ended question. I think the first year is in this report where we asked students, like, what does a teacher do that makes you feel like you matter to them? And we had over 2,000 students respond. And so those themes that reported are very robust, and they came up over and over. It was really just like super encouraging.
Yeah.
Last year's was, I forgot, but it was also around like, how do you feel valued?
That's good. And I'm sure it's also valuable for teachers to see that, get some ideas. Okay, Pat?
Thanks. Well, first, I just want to say out loud that thank you for this report, but also just acknowledge that this isn't, not every district does this, like goes into this level of detail in terms of the questions, the longevity of the research, the action that's taken as a result of the data. So I just think that's really something to acknowledge and thank you both and your teams and everyone for being, thinking about this and doing this work because it really, it really matters. And it, and you know, Pete's description of how a lot of this was used was kind of one of my questions. So you check that one off, that you really are using this in a robust way across the school. And I think that's really terrific. I do have a couple of questions in terms of, I mean, I think we've seen a lot of growth and we came out of a rough time, and this started at the, you know, when the kids were coming back from COVID. But I wonder, what do we know about, I'm just gonna use the one-third because two-thirds was a pretty common number of, two-thirds of kids feel good about this or that. What do we know about the kids who are answering the questions in the less positive way?
The majority of them are saying somewhat, they're in that neutral. So it's usually a five-point scale, like agree, strongly agree, somewhat, and then disagree, strongly disagree. And so that percent that usually is in the strongly disagree is below 10%, 7%, 5%. But the majority, about a third of them, yeah, most of them are in that somewhat neutral range. So what I report is the students that feel like, agree, strongly agree, like, yes, I feel this.
Yeah.
And not just sort of in the middle.
And are we able to, because even though a lot of them are in that weird neutral middle, there are kids who are answering, no, this is bad, or no, I disagree with this. So are we able to really pinpoint some, I mean, I know it's data and we're, you know, it's not always even known who responded the way they did. But are we able to really target interventions? Are we able to understand from all the work that you're putting together some themes that can be actionable? And specific interventions that can be employed to really support the kids who aren't at the higher end of, yeah, things are great, or the midland even, who are just kind of like, I don't know what to say, I'm gonna put three, you know?
Yeah. And we're going back and looking at that deeper dive like that, we have looked at it. And so students who maybe say they don't agree, they're not necessarily saying that across all of them, it may be one or two. It's like a range of students across it, so that's hard to find some clear patterns across. But we have, and we're starting to, here were some ideas to go back and dig around to do a little deeper dive in some different ways. And so we'll see what we can.
Okay, well, I mean, it's interesting when you start to pull it apart that there's, you know, maybe it's even better in some ways. The data is a little better than even it comes out when you just look at it numerically. My other question is around the staff, S E L and well-being. And I'm just curious, what do we know about the staff who aren't as positive in their responses? I'm wondering, is there a racial component to that? Is it disaggregated? Do you know that people who are unhappy maybe fit, you know, maybe are more faculty of Black, you know, Black and Brown faculty? Or is there some, I guess, what do we know about, because some of those numbers were a little rougher.
So no, those are all anonymous, so we do not have that, we do not ask staff to identify. So we don't have any data disaggregated. I do know that the staff surveys were the hardest to analyze because we would do a fall and a spring, and the fall, we would have more response and then maybe half of that in the spring. And it's really hard to make comparisons when you only have 100 people take a survey in the spring and you had 250 from the year before. And so that's why it's probably more limited because it was harder to get and feel like we're making analyses that it could be generalizable. They're not generalizable, so it just made that piece a little bit more challenging. The best way right now that we have to look at staff feedback is through the five essential surveys and some of the patterns in there.
And you, Pete was talking about professional development and administrators and department chairs. Are you able to look at sort of all the teacher pieces too? And is that, I guess what I'm wondering is, with the numbers being, I mean, they weren't horrible, but they were definitely not as robust, let's say, or positive as some of the student responses. And I'm just wondering if there's interventions or professional development or just conversations at the staff level, supported conversations to kind of help maybe unearth what's going on and, most importantly, do something about it if people are having a difficult time?
I mean, I know we've done staff talking circles in the past as a mechanism for that. The other thing we've done this year is, we have these action groups, these A Gs. We heard from teachers and staff that they wanted time to talk and time to collaborate. And teachers around like students, right, around their classes. So we developed, we built that in so they could have more time to discuss, to talk. We gave them a framework in which to do it, so it would be productive. And we've measured that ongoing. We have a survey that goes out every time we do our professional learning now, so we'll be able to track that. We're gonna have a more comprehensive professional learning survey. But one of the things that they said was, we're feeling isolated, a great deal of isolation coming off of COVID last few years. People really like to hunker down in their rooms, they don't, they don't socialize as much. So, you know, it's nice to have a standing time, even though it's instructional, right, which we think is great.
Yeah.
But a time to like get together and collaborate has also been helpful, I think, to that. It's not perfect, but it's something we didn't have in the past. It's responsive.
That's good. Okay, thank you, those were all my questions, thank you.
Great. Other questions, Leah?
Hi. Okay, I haven't really formulated my question, I'm kind of talking, crafting this as I talk. So I think what I want to emphasize is so excellent about this is that there's often reports about the typical things, attendance rates, grades, test scores. So I think it's, I just, the fact that some changes were made in real time, you know, in response to returning from COVID. And then to really study that and what that really has meant for the school is really great. I appreciate the transparency of this report in that it really highlights the improvements in the overall student well-being, but is really honest about the persistent racial disparities. And, because I think that that's important. And along that line, it seems like there's a lot here that then, it's not data for data's sake, it's data we can use to see how we're doing, what we're gonna do next, what works, what doesn't, what we have to, what are our areas of opportunity, areas of growth? And along those lines, what would be like the next step? What can we do with this data to now get at? So why are there the persistent racial disparities? Like, what are we doing with that piece of what we found out?
Yeah, and then you can fill it in. I think one of the key pieces is that we've taken the collaborative action research model, the CARE model, where teachers pick focal students, right, based on, based on a protocol, and then plan for that student, how that student gonna receive, and then debrief that. That's a way in, and that way in is profound because we actually had data for the first time that supported the actual need to do it. And when I say the need to do it, I don't mean, when you do standardized test scores, you can explain a standardized test score away, right? You can't explain away a series of classroom observations that demonstrate this difference, particularly when Carrie's team says, oh, we didn't look at advanced placement classes at all. Right? Because, you know, the go-to when you see those disparities is, oh, you probably went to like a class that's overwhelmingly white, and you saw this. No, 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 that wasn't what we did. And conversely, didn't go to support classes either. So what we were looking at is like the academic, like, you know, the pathway to honors classes, those kind of places that are, you know, should be, right? A sort of uniform experience, at least in terms of like your analysis and inquiry and that kind of thing. But yet, we saw that based on the percentage of non-white kids. If it ticked above, was it 45%? If it was above 45%, you saw this shift. Now, the good news is, there's analysis and inquiry, and there's, all these things are happening, they're just not happening with a great frequency. And if you look at the classes that were majority white, those classes also weren't doing at a great level. So there's a land of opportunity here, interest convergence to improve. those classes also weren't doing at a great level. So there's a land, there's a land of opportunity here, interest convergence to improve instruction across the board. You overlay the CARE model with it and you say, okay, but let's let's pay attention to our, how our black and brown students that you're going to select and you're going to focus on, you're going to learn all this below-line information about, and then you're going to plan your lessons with them in mind, and then you're going to talk about it in groups. That's a shift. That's a huge shift. Now, are we doing CARE model this year where we're going into each other's classrooms? No, we're not doing that yet. We're doing it solely for planning and then reporting. With with the hope that maybe we get to the point where we can bring people in and out of classrooms, teachers in and out of their colleagues' classrooms. But in terms of laying the framework, absolutely. And that is part and parcel because this data says, we looked at your classrooms. And I actually did a presentation where I said, you know, you got your grade distributions. Oh, you can explain away a grade distribution because you can say everybody gets an A? Literally, I mean, you could argue that. You can argue that grades are inflated. You can do, you know, we don't have a uniform grading system. You can explain away the grade disparities. You can explain away test scores. What you can't explain away is when Carrie and her team go in and they see this in our own classrooms. That's the profound impact on each and every person in this building. And she's building more capacity. I mean, you're seeing more classes, right, this year? You've expanded that?
We are, yeah. We have our schedule laid out. We're probably going to do, we're looking for at least 50% more classes and observations than we have in the past. And so the other part of your question is Dr. Hard, and I think of data as a conversation, right? So we we bring this data. It's meant to be useful. Hopefully, it's useful. And and then you can make some changes, which every year administration does, and then we go back and continue to collect the data, like, is it helping? Because it's not just one thing that's going to make things changes. It's like a bunch of things. And so collectively, over time, are all these things like helping kind of shift the needle, so to speak?
And I'll add that, just as a headline, not a headline, but whatever, you know, one of the reasons why we did this at the time was because we were, it was a lot of blood, sweat and tears, as you know, about the block. Like, will it work? How are we going to evaluate? What are we going, how are we, all of the things. And as principals, it was like, Lord, have mercy. So we we needed to put some sort of a system together. So it looks like we'll be able to keep the block. Because the the block schedule had been a debate in the district for like 30 years. And it took a pandemic for us to move to a block schedule. So, but now that we've we've done that and the data looks at it the way that it does, we can take a real deep dive into instruction. And Dr. McNeil can put together whatever kind of professional development plan she wants to and needs to based on the instructional needs that this highlights, as well as the other issues that she's addressing with the MTSX process.
And you have to give it time to 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 work. Because you can't like start something and then change it.
That's right.
I mean, we've been looking at sense of belonging data, bringing it to you in the year review for many years. And so it's kind of even before the pandemic, kind of and to see that it's, you know, this shift up from last year, we're going to keep looking at it and hope that shift up is like staying up there. With all of the social emotional climate, you know, work is being done.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, I think Liz and then we'll go to Mary.
Hi. So I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking in the wonderful memo you gave us and you have the data points in bar charts, all the data points for the domains one and two. And tell me if I am imagining things, but when I look at the racial disparities between the experiences and the races of the students, it looks like there's less of a disparity this time than what I've seen in the past. Has it, has it shrunk a little? Or is it just a trick of the eye with the way the charts are made?
Which, like, which one are you?
Like, like teacher caring and classroom community and stuff like that. Like, it looked like it narrowed.
There, yes. I think everything is like, from last year's data, it's across all the student groups they've shifted up. We still see disparities. Our students who identify as white and Asian tend to tend to indicate the sense of belonging or connection that's above average, and students who identify as black and Latinx below the average. But I do think there's been a shift. There's a couple of places where there are really no differences. And I've seen that for a couple of years, but I don't know if that's like across all of it. But yes, there's some patterns.
And then I was just also wondering about, I love this domain three with the classroom observations. This brought me so much joy. Because the data is so fascinating. I love looking at it. And I was curious, who are our observers? Like, who's doing the observing?
It's me and Dr. Liz Harder, our senior research associate.
And talk about your training, Carrie.
We use this tool. It's called CLASS, and it's out of University of Virginia. I used it many, many years ago when we did the restructured freshman year and we did observations around that. And we did, it's pretty intense, two-day training. And then you have to pass a series of like tests based on observations and how you score it. So we did that. And then every year, when Liz and I, when we start observations, so we've already done it, we go in and we do several together to check our inter-rater reliability. And once we feel like, okay, we're back on track, you know, after several months off, then we start doing them on our own. So we've already gone through this year and done our inter-rater reliability checks. Feels like, okay, we've had a conversations and kind of reviewed how we look at the different things and what's considered medium, high or low. And then we just divvy it up and kind of split it between mid-November and mid-March. And just make them, we already have our schedules, for example, same process, looking at how many days of the week are we capturing? Are we trying to get equal distribution across all the different departments, all the different blocks? If you got block two, same number on Wednesdays as Fridays? Making sure we get block eight on Friday, like that is our process to make sure. And then we randomly select the teachers. For the past few years, we're trying to make sure we didn't do the same teacher, like, two years in a row. And this year, we just threw everyone back in the pot and just did a random selection again.
Okay, that's interesting. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, I I feel very strongly, and the data supports it, that all of these support initiatives from the SEL to the blocks, to the cell phone policy and restorative justice, like all of this, I really believe it has such a profound effect on our students. I mean, it's such a massive effort, like what Pat was saying, that we care that much, that we're really trying to hit it from every angle. And I do believe that these things really matter to our students. So I just want to say, well done and keep it up.
I mean, Dr. McNeil's tightened the cell phone policy this year. So collecting this data to see if there's any changes next year is also important as we look and see as things are tightened or adjusted, just to keep that process.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that observation process, though. That was, that's amazing that you took the time and and learned really how to go and observe. So that that's really great.
Thanks. I mean, it's not, it's not. And I, whenever I come to teachers, we send them the rubric. Everyone, I'm happy to explain it, but I kind of explain it, give them, everyone a copy of what we're looking at and we're scoring. They have a link if they want to look at it. And then we just make sure we're not, like, if Dr. Harder saw someone last year, then I don't let her go, I'll go. We just kind of make sure we're not, we're mixing it all up.
Yeah, that's great.
Trying to be as transparent and random and equal about it.
There's also an anonymous feature, right, Carrie?
It's anonymous. No one knows. We have a coding system on when we like track the data that no one can look at and say, I know who that is. And so no teacher should, can look at this data and say, that's me. No one can do that.
Yeah, good. Awesome. That's great.
Yeah, I am always in awe of your work and feel that we are so lucky to have such a rigorous research component. So thank you for that. So I'm thinking about a couple of things. One is the theory of action that we may have around leadership and staff, how we're cultivating their capacity for sustainability. Because I I love our, that we are looking at what our students say and what we observe in the classrooms, but I was thinking about what staff said regarding their own PD and kind of what they need. So that's one thing that's swimming around in my head is how can we help them help our kids? And so many teachers are brilliant in their own right, but definitely are not trained in the learning sciences. And that's why, like, the Chung Chiu review or the things you're doing are really critical. And so I just keep thinking about how we can do more of that or we can support that. And then my other thought was just around, you know, I'm thinking a lot about the protective factors that kids need. And this is going to seem probably trivial, but I was just thinking about the no cell bell to bell and how you have that in the domain of behavior and policy. And there's something about it that seems to me to be very much about wellbeing. And I'm just thinking about how while we're looking at rules and what not to do, but there's something so much more powerful about that move and and the wellbeing that's created because of it. And so I just am thinking about how we can maybe shift that dialogue. I mean, just, I don't know exactly what the endpoint is and what I'm saying, but it's kind of swimming around in my mind.
I think it falls in two areas. You see it in the student engagement. So you see the difference in student engagement from the like 23 to 24 in the observations because they're putting them away. So that, I I see a difference there. But then also it's with the tardies and the in-hall, in-hall, you know, truant or walkers. And so seeing that go down too is where you also like trying to see that. So.
Yeah.
But maybe articulating it a little different.
Yeah, just that it's so positive. It's such a beautiful effect that we are seeing from our kids who really are being freed up to engage in engagement. And so there's something about it that I want to move it out of this behavioral kind of, you know, penalty or something, and talk about it in its its extractive move allows for all this additive stuff to happen. And so there's something about that that I want to re-categorize, but that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for this. This is a great report. It's very pretty advanced, I'd say. So I appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
I'll stay here for the next.
You can stay here for the next one, okay? And the next one is the first reading for press policy 120?
Yes, the Policy Committee met on November 19th through the review of the most recent policy update, which is press 120. This is a first reading. The final reading will be next, next board meeting. And you see the committee recommendations are there as well as the policies.
Right.
And we do have one, 8:30 visitors to and conduct on school property, which is currently under attorney review. And I'll have their recommendation next time.
Next meeting. Okay, thank you. All right. And you can stay there and respond to our next item on FOIA's. We have three, I believe.
Yes, we have three. We have one from Bennington on 11:25 and then two from the same person on 11:26. And the responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, so moving right along, we're at Board Committee Reports. And so I have one, but I don't have it written up yet. So I'll have it for the January meeting. But I went to a meeting of the Evanston Cradle to Career. And basically, that meeting consisted of the participants talking about the erosion of public funds. That's really kind of like the big conversations. All these agencies are trying to figure out how to survive in this era. And seeing that this, the the benefits go away and and inflation continues to to be escalating. So everyone's dealing with some of the same issues that we are. But, you know, when this is all they have to rely upon, it's, it's been, these are really hard discussions. So and then just really how this has been affecting us, what to expect ahead. And and they're just trying to do some brainstorming around solutions, offering workshops and how to navigate some of the resources and pull things together. So. But I'll have this ready for you. I I need to clean that up a little bit. Okay. And I think Pat?
Yeah. So the November EdRed meeting was right before our last, our November board meeting. So I have it written up, but it also will be in the January. The write-up is in January, but the report is this month. But anyway. So there were several different presentations, one by a superintendent in DuPage County, talking about a new English language learning consortium. And our district and other districts can be a part of it. So there's, we can contact that superintendent for more information. Senator Edley Allen presented on some of the things that were passed during veto session. And the one that was most interesting to us relates to legislation regarding immigration and creating protective zones at daycares, hospitals, courthouses and public higher education, you know, institutions. Then Forensic, our law firm, and EdRed did some legislative updates as well. One area that they're working on together is this issue of student safety to and from school and outside of school, when they're even at school activities, but are not within the building. A couple of bills that they talked about, one was related to Open Meetings Act, just basically that you can have a state rep or a regional rep at your closed session self-evaluations. But the FOIA one was rather interesting. So it was part of the same same bill. So one is, one of the changes that they voted on was that you have a right, we have a right, to verify that the requister is a person. And I thought that was really interesting, especially given some of the things that we've seen with some of these quote-unquote news sources and so forth. So it's also not a requirement that districts open electronic files or hyperlinks. So if someone sends a file, we don't have to look at it in order to respond to the FOIA. And I thought, again, that's interesting because given everything we know about cybersecurity. And that junk mail is not considered a public record. So when, you know, Pete does these or the FOIA officer does the search for an email that has Pat Savage Williams' name in it, right? If there are a bunch in in the junk mail, that doesn't have to be included. And I think these are really, they're small, but really powerful things. So EdRed, the priorities for this year, they talked about at the end, world language graduation requirement, kind of already have that here. So the mandated categorical funding issue, particularly as relate to tiered three and four schools. So not as much on us, but still. And then the big one that I think we all have been thinking about is law enforcement procedures related, not just to campus, but off-campus. And I mentioned that a minute ago. So it was a pretty informative, informative meeting.
Thank you. All right. Any other committee reports? Okay, so we'll keep moving. And we're at the Student Board Report.
Okay, hello, everybody. I hope you had a restful fall break. Since the last board meeting, there have been a couple of significant events here at ETHS that I wanted to highlight. Empty Bowl, which is our school's largest fundraiser, took place last Friday, and that raised over $6,000 for the community fridges. It was a great event. There was free soup for anyone who attended, as well as hundreds of beautiful ceramic pieces up for purchase. The Chinese classes took a week-long trip to Shanghai. It was a great experience for those students to be immersed in their language and really see the culture they've been studying. The Scholastic Bowl team found a sponsor, which has been an ongoing issue. They had been unable to compete or practice, but now they have Miss Sarah Dreller and will be competing again. The principal's office unveiled Spirit Week this week. Today was pajama day. Uh, the principal's office unveiled uh Spirit Week this week, today was pajama day.
Oh, wow.
Dr. McNeil had her pajamas on.
I was gonna say, those are pajamas.
Um, finals are next week and teachers are spending this week as a review week, so no new material. Students are focusing on preparing for finals.
Yes.
And then as a student union, we will have finished sorting data from the Student Voice Forum by the end of winter break and we will form committees to target specific, specific issues after break. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Campbell?
All right, good evening. Uh, I'll start uh by saying, I, I, I made the board aware today that um we are sort of at the end of what we could manage, receiving no money from Cook County um for the year. Uh, we have gone through July, August, September, October, November, now the first week, second week in December, with no money from Cook County. And so this is it, we're at the end. So um, and uh, I'll be working with the board on uh whatever advocacy is necessary uh and working with the county so that not only is ETHS, but other school districts who that heavily rely upon property tax dollars, that we are uh in the situation again. Um, and so you'll be hearing more about that. And you all know how frustrated and angry I am about that.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully, uh Kendra says, maybe we'll get a disbursement by Friday. Uh, we got our fingers crossed, uh, but if that doesn't happen, um, we'll be coming back to the board because we're gonna have to make some other moves, right? All right, so that's bad news. Um, but as we gather for this last financial um, uh, board, financial, see, see the money's on my mind. Uh, as we gather for the final board meeting of this, of the, of this uh calendar year, I want to acknowledge that in many ways our community have felt, it's been a challenging year. Um, you know, everybody's dealing with navigating uncertain, seat uncertainty, difficult moments and some real pain for folks. And yet through it all, our students and staff and families have shown remarkable resilience. And the way this community continues to show up for one another remains one of ETHS' greatest strengths. This year has also reminded us that our learning isn't confined to classrooms. Our students are growing not only academically, but as people who understand what it means to um lead with integrity, to engage in complexity and stand for, up for what it's right. So I have no doubt that they will carry these lessons with them as they move forward into the world. As Eva mentioned, with finals beginning next week, I want to wish our students um focus and confidence as they finish the semester. Uh, and thank you for the staff and the families for continued, their support of students throughout the semester. And I'm proud of this town and the work we've done together and the way we move forward as a community. And I'm hoping that the upcoming break, it seems like we're getting a lot of snow, will offer us a renewal for everyone and we look forward to starting January strong. I can't believe that twenty-twenty-five is just about over and we're starting a new year, yeah.
Can I ask you a question? What's the financial impact? I'm not receiving, the, the Cook County.
So the financial impact is significant and Kendra can, can help me here. Um, we um are pretty much relying on all of our um, what we call our um, our savings, our fund balance to run the school. And we've done that for a number of years. Uh, last week Kendra had to go to the bank uh and, you know, break investments for us to be able to have cash and have cash flow. Um, am I correct at that, Kendra?
Yeah, we had to liquidate some investments.
Yes, and so we rely upon those investments and the interest of those investments as a part of our budget.
Correct.
And so there is a real financial impact. We went to the county and said, hey, why don't we go for a zero-interest loan? And the county told us our credit was too, too good and we had to have uh, uh.
A credit rating that either met or was below theirs. So although the error is not the. So basically, yeah, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
So because our credit rating is uh AAA, as it has been for some time now.
Which we were celebrating.
Which we celebrate and will, you know, and we have great pride about that.
Yeah.
They, their stance is that, well, if your credit is so good, then you should obtain a loan separate of us. But that means that we'd have to pay interest on the loan. Um, and it doesn't make sense that we would be penalized.
So we're, yeah.
Even though it's not our fault.
Correct.
So we're paying.
How much are we waiting for?
Half of the money.
Yeah, millions of dollars, like tens, tens of millions of dollars, yeah.
So.
And it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what are the numbers?
Yeah, so wh- right now we're waiting for the fall installment. So if we talk about property taxes, um, for our property taxes, we budget over eighty million dollars and let's say that it's about half of that, just for the purposes of this conversation. The split is a little bit different, um, where the fall amount would actually be a little bit bigger. So, yeah, about fifty percent of that.
I mean, I, I think it's important to be that um clear, right? Because this money belongs to the citizens of, of Evanston.
Correct.
Right?
That's right.
And, and they feel some sort of way about this high school. And to know that um, that they're not taking care of the kids in this school and this community, we gotta be very vocal about um this happening and, and, and the impact. I mean, the fact that we're going to the bank, um, trying to cover a deficit that they have created and for whatever reason they're comfortable creating it, um, needs to be broadcast.
Yeah, and um, you know, as Dr. Campbell shared in the correspondence today, you know, we made it this far and finally, when they sent out the bills on November fourteenth, it was like, okay. I think, I think we might be okay. And now the newest hurdle is that, yes, we are collecting the money, but we're not yet in a position to distribute it as we typically would. And we're hoping we'll be able to distribute it by Friday, but we're really not sure. So it's just like, you finally think that you've gotten to a point where it's gonna be okay and yet something else from Cook County.
So they said that they would possibly distribute it by Friday, that's where you get that from. But it's certainly not definitive language.
It is not.
No.
No.
Yeah, so there are some avenues that uh the board can take uh and other school boards are considering. Um, and I mean, considering maybe even state legislation that at least causes Cook County to just notify us that we're not gonna get any money. Uh, so there are, there are things that are happening that I think the board can and should be speaking very loudly about. Um, because this is not the first year.
Yeah.
This is just as bad, it hasn't been this bad.
It hasn't been this bad.
This is the fourth out of five years.
Four out of five years.
Four out of the last five years.
But we've never had to wait to December.
It has not been, mm, actually, I would have to check that.
Okay.
It's typically due in December, but um I think that this might be the latest that we're still wondering when we're gonna get the cash, like usually we would know by now. Um, and even that is pretty, I mean, the reference that I made today, I said, Marcus, we're scraping the bottom of the pot. You know, and there's not much, much more that we can do here without having to um go for tax anticipation warrants, potentially, um, if they don't come through, um, so yeah.
Which hurts us financially.
Absolutely.
By the way.
Absolutely.
Right, here we are in no fault at all being stu- spending our investments.
Spending our investments.
You know, losing interest and could possibly have to issue tax anticipation warrants at no fault of our own because we have done the things that we needed to do.
Right.
Uh, and we can't get any, any cooperation from the county. Uh, as I say, we're not the only district in this situation. There are other districts spending down their fund balances as well.
Several of which neighboring that have also already had to have gone out for tax anticipation.
There are other districts that have already issued tax anticipation warrants.
I just wanted to commend Kendra and her team. I emailed her this morning, um, cause I couldn't remember how much cash on hand we keep for our, you know, for this. And um, she let me know that we typically have between like four and five months of cash on hand. And I just want to commend you all for being so responsible with that type of um savings just for when stuff like this happens. And I know you've probably exhausted most of that because it's been so many months and now we're doing, you know, tapping into investments. But I just wanted to um commend you all on creating that safety net for us.
Thank you so much, um, you know, and I, I've said it before, my, my, my entire team and then of course the larger team here at ETHS, we preach a great deal about the importance of having a healthy fund balance, right? About when we, if we see our fund balance not going in the right direction, the need to have some mitigating efforts um to make sure that we're, we're maintaining at a level that's appropriate for these situations. And so um sometimes that's challenging, you know, especially with the landscape today. But we're, we're definitely doing our best as, as an administration, of course, as a board and uh leadership team and everyone else here.
Yeah, this is unbelievable. Well, thank you for allowing us to get all this on record, because this is important for the community to know.
For sure.
That we are really, um, we're struggling. Anything else? Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So we're at I, action items, the first action item is the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five tax levy. Could I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from November tenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular and closed session meeting, treasurer's report from September twenty-twenty-five, approval of bills and personnel report.
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is old and new business, do we have any old or new business? You like some?
All our likes.
Oh. I thought you guys had all this old and new business. Here we go, I put my pen down.
We want the meeting to last another six hours, Pat.
Okay, um, closing of the board, any polling of closing of the board? Everybody have a great winter break, that's my, my comment. I think that um, we are, as, as Marcus said, it's amazing that we're ending twenty-twenty-five. So the next time we're together as a board will be a whole new year, yes. Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Is that not what I'm supposed to say?
That's it, yeah, that's it. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, what time is it?
Almost a record.
Wow. This is early.